Go ahead and get started with this meeting. We're giving a play, you two technical difficulties, as you could hear. So could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Han.
Here.
Ho.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Chipman.
Here.
Von Breckhorst.
Here.
Okay. Tonight, I am so sorry, my mind just went blank. We have the pastor from the Church of Christ.
Yeah, close enough.
Mark Burges.
Mark Burges, yes.
Burges in Assembly.
And then, oh, okay.
You're good.
And then the flagrant, yes, in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you for allowing me to open the meeting in prayer. Let us pray. Father God, we come before you in the name of your son, Jesus. We give you all honor and praise. We seek your wisdom, your grace, and your guidance for the city council and all the actions to be taken up this evening. We ask our mayor and this assembled council for the various levels of city department officials, you graciously grant them each and collectively your guidance to serve with integrity, wisdom, justice, and cohesion. The ability to work together for the best possible outcomes. Compassion for the welfare and needs of all who call Weezer home. I pray Lord for the agenda before them this evening, the matters to be considered, decisions to be considered and made that will benefit the populace in the future of our city. May your presence be felt, your wisdom freely given, and your peace upon each one here. Watch over those who serve our community and keep us all safe. In the name of Jesus, we pray, and everybody say, amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any commission reports?
Always.
Go right ahead.
Always something to talk about. I'll start with our design committee. So the Weezer Design Review Committee has met, and we're continuing to meet the meeting next week. And just a current update, we have submitted to you and the lawyers to kind of review adopting the committee as an official step in review process so that it's recognized and then becomes something that any development plan comes in will be sent. And we are also looking at the kind of next steps of design review that we want to have adopted. So lighting, signage, kind of those next things that we want to keep in congruence with the look of what we want for Weezer. We're also in the process of kind of looking at what it would look like to have an overlay for some specific corridors within the city, which kind of is in alignment with what other cities do with themselves. You know, what are our main corridors within the city, and what do we want that to be? How does that look different from other parts of the city? Just so that we kind of are planning forward. That's our whole goal. That's that.
Super. Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Moving on, are there any committee reports?
Does my mind qualify as committee with the library, or is that supposed to be a commission?
Call it a commission.
Okay, well, can we back up?
Sure.
Maybe back up. Okay. During the month of February, the library checked out 3,715 books, magazines, and et cetera, and had 3,549 patrons visit the library. One of the things that Timber does exceptionally well, I think, is apply for grants, and she's always getting new things for the library. She recently received a grant that will get them 10 laptops with a charging cart that can be used in their summer reading program and with classes that they're talking about having down there. And she's also proposing to apply for a grant so they can get a blow-up screen for outdoor movies and have some local, perhaps local food trucks appear during that time. And so they're planning on a couple of movie nights during the summer. So always exciting at the Weezer library.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Do we have any committee reports?
Is that Weezer Economic Development Committee?
Call it a mere commission.
Okay.
The committees are of the city council.
Oh.
So go ahead.
Well, see, there we go. Clarified. That makes sense. Okay, so the other commission is Weezer Economic Development. Comit...
Command.
Committee. You know, that's a commission. We met just this last weekend. Main Street is getting going, and up and running, and we're very pleased. So that committee is currently looking at getting quotes so that we can add something to the back of the new signs that we've had added to the entrances of town. We're trying to get some bids and quotes on a "Play Cucumber Again" type of a thing. That's one of the goals they're working on. We're also in the process of reaching out to a number of different organizations across the city and combining or collaborating just what kind of things happen and what kind of view that the city wants to see happen. What's our vision for the city? And so they're wanting to kind of pull those ideas together. They're doing representatives, they're meeting with business owners and longtime committed individuals in the city on what they think we could do to help kind of build and grow Weezer. And then we are also in the process of trying to work with the law or hoping to work with the Law Foundation as far as finding some additional avenues to getting some of that funding to further move the Main Street program and other projects that Weezer Economic Development Committee would like to see done. So that's it. I'm done.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a second here. Could we have department reports?
Department of Weezer, City Weezer Department reports for February 2024. The Weezer Police Department had 16 adult arrests, 11 of them misdemeanor, five felony. The kids were good this month. Citations were 42, misdemeanor seven, infractions 35. There was 408 calls for service. Case reports were 32, felony five, misdemeanor 11, accident five, and incident 11. Animal control, dog complaints were 19, impounded were six, returned to owners was eight. There was one adopted, one transferred out. There was 11 cat complaints, 10 were impounded. The federal cat trap neuter and release program ended up doing 14 spay and neuters. We had one cat transferred out. There was one wildlife, two livestock, and two citations. The ordinance complaints, there were five abandoned vehicles on the West Clarifier. That entails taking all the water out, pressure washing and inspecting everything. It will be back online in March. The water department, water department production for February of 2023 was 11.866 million gallons. February for 2024 was 12.606 million gallons. They also continued annual plant maintenance. They rebuilt one service. They installed 14 meters for new services. And they continue to read all the city electric and water meters. Electric department, the power consumption for January 2023 was 5,756,485 kilowatts. January of 2024 was 5,907,562 kilowatts. They installed new overhead to three trailers in Diamond Trailer Park. That's where the trailers caught on fire a couple of years ago, or last year. They energized primary to Sundance subdivision and installed services to two new homes. They installed underground conduit and wired to six homes in the Old Sperry subdivision. And they set a new 15,000 KVA transformer at the new Treasure Valley plant off of Railroad Avenue. The street department, they ran the sweeper for 15 days. They repaired and repainted all picnic tables in the park. They worked in the shop on various projects. They worked at the pound repairing kennels and built a complete new one. They also put up two prefab storage sheds. They also welcomed a new employee. The recreation department, women's volleyball finished up as well as men's basketball. Coed volleyball starts in March, on March 5th, with a total of five teams participating. Registration for youth soccer has closed, and they are looking for coaches. And they are currently taking registration for youth baseball and softball. The building department issued 11 building permits this month, nine single-family dwellings, one patio cover or deck, and one dwelling alteration or addition. Mayor and city council, that concludes your department reports for February 2024.
Mayor, can I just add? Some of the council members were able to go take a tour of the water tower and see its updated progress, and that was truly impressive. That team is doing a great job. Really enjoyed getting to walk through. You know, you drive on the outside, you don't think it's that big, and then you get inside and you think, it's just as big.
That's huge.
It's huge. Yeah, so I'm just really, really pleased with what that team is doing and how the department's working with them. So it was nice to see.
What is that, a million and a half gallons, Mike?
Yes, sir. We have that one as a million and a half, and we have an identical one on Chicken Hill. We also have an additional half a million gallon one back up that most people don't see. It's up in the canyon there, so. We're looking forward to having it back.
Okay. Has the council had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Mayor, I move the minutes of the regular meeting from February 12th and the special meeting February 22nd be approved as written.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion pass. And has the finance committee looked at the bills?
Yes, we have. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills as reviewed by the finance committee and present them to the treasurer. We have warrants drawn for payment and have the mayor sign them.
I'm seconded up.
It's been moved to the second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blackwell.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ho.
Yes.
Von Breckhorst.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along, we'll vote to unfinished business, which there is none. And then on to new business. And first item on the agenda is Rose Advocates yearly update.
Veronica, can you make sure that's...
Hello?
And Veronica, I'm gonna give you your name and your address, please.
Yes, sir. So I'm Veronica Moscas. I am the executive director of Rose Advocates, and I would like to say thank you, Mayor and Chair Council or council members for letting me come in and give an update about Rose Advocates and what we do. But this year of Rose Advocates, this is my second year coming into as executive director, and we've been quite busy. We have worked very closely with our police department and prosecutors. And so I'm gonna give you some numbers. So this year, in client-wise, just in Washington County, we've had 283 clients. We've had 234 females and 48 males. Our domestic violence cases, we had 248. Our stalking cases, we'd have 42. Teen dating violence, 52. Child abuse, mental act or assault, was 50. And bullying was 26. And adult sexual assault was 31. So that's from January 2023 to December. In this past year, we've sheltered 25 families from Weezer in our shelter in Payette. We've had monthly CCRT meetings, which is community-coordinated community response teams, where the Rose Advocates, the prosecutors, the Weezer Police Department, and the sheriffs, we all get together and visit about cases or things that have gone on and see how we can do better, what we can do for each other, and how we can all just collaborate to make sure that we're not duplicating services. We have those monthly meetings every month of the second Thursday. I want to thank our community for coming to our soup bowl last month in February. It was a big success. And then last but not least, April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, so I will be coming out to visit all of you and give you some child abuse awareness swag and books, whatever it might be. Do you guys have any questions for me?
So is your caseload, you gave us the number for '23, is that increasing or decreasing or staying about the same?
So from last year, we reported 220, and this year was 283. And granted, not all cases are cases reported to like the police department. It's not something that we've gone on call for them. They might be just an incident at home that they come to our office and want to figure out like, how can, what could be done? What could they do better? Could they get some counseling, you know? Where can we guide them to assist?
And so is each case, is that like a different person, or can you have multiple?
It can be the same person. It could just be a different incident. So I could have an incident in January, and then, you know, everything might be going well for a little while, and then another incident in March.
Okay, so it could be the same person in two different times. That'd make me feel marginally better.
Granted, you have to remember, in a rural area, it says in the statistics that clients usually go back nine times. So we could have nine different incidents.
Wow.
Any further report? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry the numbers aren't smaller. Like, I wish, every year, we kind of hope that things are getting better, and I think more people are reaching out because they know, like, we're here. They, you know, we put our signs up, we put our brochures out, just to, you know, anything we can help with, please reach out and let us know.
It's such a vital service, so thank you. I mean, although the numbers are up, it doesn't negate how important and what it reveals to us that our community needs. So thank you for all your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that you're having to work so hard.
It's not me, it's Carl.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Sarita's yearly update.
I have my best passing at home. Thank you so much.
Well, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you again for allowing us to come before you, and I am going to try and be as quick as I can. So Sarita, I'm just gonna do a little brief about what we do, just as a reminder of...
Name and address.
Oh, name and address. I'm sorry. Kristin Nesken's, Executive Director of Snake River Economic Development Alliance.
Your address?
Sarita.
And your address, please.
650 College Boulevard in Ontario, Oregon.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Sarita covers two states, three counties. So we cover Mountier County, Payette, and Washington Counties. What our idea is here is we reformed back in 2009, thinking that as a region, we can, we have more power, more pool, one common goal to work for. So that is how Sarita came about. I want to just quickly talk about some of our target areas. In the packet that I gave you, it will kind of list those areas once again. But it's just a review, you know, we really want to find things that fit our communities. So our target industries are agriculture and food processing, outdoor recreation, manufacturing, assembly, distribution, warehouse, renewable energies. And then recently, we've added in the last couple of years, tourism and hospitality. Because we think that's an untapped asset that we have here in our region. We have so much outdoor things to do, and we're really seeing the pick up of those activities, especially after 2019 with COVID-19. Everyone wants to do that recreation, so how can we tap into that industry? So we are a public-private partnership. So our, the way we're funded is through private membership and through memberships of banks and small businesses, things like that. And then, of course, our cities, counties, and good folks like you, so we appreciate that. Some of our activities, we include business retention and expansion. So it's really important for us to make sure that our businesses here are succeeding and doing well. So we want to, we, you know, we do checkups with them. We respond to state and other leads. So when Sarita was formed, most of our leads came through the state. And they would notify us and say, hey, we have a company looking to land somewhere. What do you have? Most of those now come directly to our office. Eighty percent of those come to our office, which is a good sign, saying that we're doing something right. We've got our name out there. They're looking. They know who to contact. So we're proud of that number. I also do a lot of land inventory. So Idaho has a website called The Gem State Prospector. And if you haven't ever seen that, I would encourage you to go look at it. And that is a free site for us to list all of our properties that we have that investors or other companies will look at. So I'm gonna say a little over, almost two-thirds of the states use this prospector. It's called Zoom Prospector. So it's widely known, well-used. It's something that's free of service. So if you have a realtor who has an industrial property that they're wanting to sell, we would go ahead and list that. I would, I'm the person who lists it, but I would list them as who to contact. So it goes directly to them. It doesn't really necessarily come through us. If they have questions, they always have my contact information. A lot of times, they'll contact us and say, hey, we're looking at this property. What can you tell us about the area? And that's where I kind of step in, so I can give that kind of information, maybe incentives and things like that, who to contact for power. What is the outlook for power right now? How far are we out? You know, those kind of things. But really, I'm a connect the dots kind of person. I work with a lot of entrepreneurs and small businesses just to help them either get started or grow or expand, those kind of things. If I don't know it, I usually can figure out somebody who does. So we have a lot of great people on our board, which has been really helpful. If we need to make that phone call to maybe Commerce or even the governor, we have somebody who's, you know, we're just good advocates for business and making sure our businesses are successful. I do attend trade shows. So marketing, there's two things that I've noted for myself, for goals for this year. One is to update our properties, which I think is really important for people to be able to access that and to be seen. The other is our marketing. And as anyone knows, if you put an ad in a local paper, it's not cheap. So when we're talking about global marketing, and we want to reach not just our local people, but we want to reach out outside, out of our boundaries into the U.S. and even further, it's not cheap. So if, sometimes people are like, well, what is, I mean, we spend a lot of money on, that's our goal right now, is that marketing. We're trying to get out there. We're very, I'm a very good entrepreneur of trying to find ways to be a good steward of the Sarita dollar because it is, it's tight for everybody. It's tight for our cities, our businesses. So I mean, I try really hard to be a good steward of that, but another, yeah, so marketing is a big one. So right now, I wouldn't have said five years ago, Fruitland was our number one all the time. What's going on in Fruitland? Now it's Weezer, guys. It really is. So we've done something right. We've done something right. Weezer is hopping. We have a lot of things going on in Weezer right now. So just some of the things, some of our local successes that we've had. We've been really good and successful at getting grants recently. For some reason, they have been just really coming for us, and I don't know exactly why. But as you'll see on your agenda, and a couple of things is one of the grants that Sarita wrote for the businesses, one of the businesses coming up and that's going over here by the Maverick. So we do do some grants. We try and stay clear of huge giant grants because they're very consuming, but we do help businesses write grants and things like that. We try not to duplicate services, so our business partners with USDA and the Small Business Center, the SBA, those kind of things. You know, without them, we try not to duplicate services. So we just really work as a great team. And I would suggest, if you know someone who's looking for those things, to let us know. And Larry probably can tell you that we're working really hard to try and find a way to mitigate and have a full-time person doing grants for Sarita for our communities because there is such a need for it right now. Someone who's actually specifically looking for the things that we need. So for instance, I met with New Plymouth, and they're in desperate need for something for their library before they lose it. So I wrote your name down. I'm like, okay, we need to get those two connected, you know? Have New Plymouth be docked in Weezer, but to help them be successful. But we do do a lot of those things. Like I said, I connect the dots for a lot of people, a lot of entrepreneurs. How can we help them? How can we get them started? Who can I refer them to that's gonna make them successful? We also have a new grant coming up that we're putting out for another gem grant. The state of Idaho will only allow us one per entity. So you guys were gracious enough to do the last gem grant, so we're submitting us another gem grant through Washington County for Weezer. It's a way to get around that until we get this one closed and we can apply for another one. But we really want to see, you know, that money coming in our direction. And we see it going out a lot over the state, but we want to see it come here. So we push really hard for those grants, and we spend a lot of time and work really hard on those to make sure we get those ones. Another one I would just like to mention, in your packet, we have last, well, actually, yeah, last month's minutes. But you'll notice in there, we got to go tour Pack Fiber. And I'm not sure if a lot of you have been there, but that was one of our other grants, a 200,000 rural infrastructure grant that we got for them. And they are just a wonderful company. I can't tell you how impressed I've been. We had a couple of commissioners come out because they were the one who funded that grant for us and who facilitated it, I should say. But it was a great, great company. We're glad to have them here. So we're looking for those successes, those wins. Our job is to get them here, and then you guys have that job of nailing them down and telling them how wonderful Weezer is and finding them a spot. But we're just here, we're here to help. We're here to support the businesses. You know, if we don't hear from you, we assume we're doing good. But if you have questions and if you have things like that, please let us know where we can step in, where we can help. We're always willing to help. And like I said, if I'm not that person, it's, we'll find that person to help. I think the last thing is, is that we are looking for some board members to fill. We had a couple openings, so if you're interested, let us know. We would love to have you join us. I've also included in there just a little bit about who's on our board and our new brochure. You can take a look at that and see what that looks like. But I do appreciate your time, and I would ask if you have any questions that maybe I could answer. And that was a whirlwind of information, so I'm sorry.
So can you describe for us your relationship with like our Economic Development Committee?
Well, of course, because Patrick was supposed to be right here tonight. He's like, I got to get some stuff for the store tonight. I just can't. So he's not here tonight, but yeah. So of course, we work really closely with Patrick and that committee. You know, a big supporter, of course, is Idaho Commerce, which is helping with the downtown and doing the Main Street stuff. But we just have those really close, you know, we're not to duplicate. We don't want to step on people's toes. But we definitely want to see, you know, that things are progressing, moving forward, that we're being supported, you know, if there's things out there that we can be doing. I had a gal call me. I got to present at the Chamber Meeting, Weezer Chamber Meeting, last month. And I got a lot of great contacts from that, too, folks that I think that we can really step up and help, too. So yeah, so Patrick was supposed to be here, but he's not. And so we work really closely, you know, and we don't want to do things that you, as a city, are doing, but we want to complement that for sure. And like I said, once we get them here, that's your job. You're gonna wow them, and you're gonna show them all the great things that Weezer has to offer. And we just want to make sure we get them here and we get noticed, so. Thank you, Larry.
Yep, so when someone contacts you and said, hey, I have a business I want to start somewhere in considering your area, so what's the process after that? Do they normally have a community or a location picked out, or do they?
They usually have a state picked out. So each of the states really has unique advantages and disadvantages. So usually, when I get a call, it's like, we're looking at Idaho, we're looking at Oregon. We're looking at Oregon because we're looking at... We're looking at Oregon because, we're looking at Idaho because. So one thing I have found that is really interesting is, we've gotten a lot of folks coming up from California. And you guys will know with Project Bor Buddy, does that sound familiar to everybody? Okay. As we're working with them, and they're, you know, they're just so gung ho, and they're like, we have some international sales, I'm like, Commerce would love to have, you know, to take you places and do things like that. But, really, back to the, it's just a matter of how we can connect them, how we can make them successful, and hopefully.
So you get information from them about exactly what they want in a facility or a location?
Yeah.
What are the things they need to have access to? And then, then you have compiled the information from the various communities in our area?
Right, right.
And you can line those up?
And usually, I don't really pick a community. Usually if I get that, I will say, we have a project coming up. Are you interested in submitting for this? So that would go to you guys, and, you know, is this a possibility? You know, they're looking for a certain amount of acreage, or they're looking for a building, they're looking for rail access, whatever it might be. If the choose fits, then we usually push it out to all of our communities. And that way, everyone gets a chance, and they get to kinda pick where they want to land. So, yeah. It's usually a pretty long process in the way we submitted that kind of information. But, I'll have to say, Weezer is pretty unique in the fact that you have your own power and things like that, too. So, yeah. Does that kinda answer how that process works? Larry, you have something to add? He's on our board.
So, yeah, you know, we, just to let everybody know, we do contribute to Sarita each year through our budget. And have a board position that we have in Sarita, you know, as part of that. I've been filling that role for the last few years. So it's, I will say that the process of getting a new business in here, especially somebody from out of town, is long, and perilous, and dumb founding. Because you can have, you can have a deal ready, you think they're gonna break ground next week, and next week comes and they're like, just gone. So it's tedious work, it's, you know, our, I think, our Economic Development Committee is at least as good as any other community in Sarita about having information, you know, available for people that Sarita gets contacted by. And I think that's likely a, you know, reason why there's more things coming our way is because, you know, the other thing that I have garnered from being on the board is, when they want information, they want it like, right now. And when we need information from them, then it's going to be a while. And so, if you don't have that all compiled, and that's the, that's the great thing about our committee is they've compiled the information that we have been learning that those people want, that Sarita helps us put together. And we really have that, and Sarita does a great job. I've described it a lot as Sarita gets the cows to the pasture, and we gotta get them through the gate. And I think that's been working very well in our case. Sarita serves a great purpose for us, I think.
Thank you, Larry. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time and your service. I do have to shout out to Larry, he has really stepped up. He lost our treasurer, and he graciously offered to do that for that position.
I'm not sure if that's how I'd put it.
The bottom of it was, I'm sure gonna talk him into being the secretary, but it didn't go down. So we got him as treasurer. So, I appreciate your time, and just know that we're available for phone calls or whatever. Just give us a call anytime to answer any questions that you might have. Send some folks our way, we'd love to visit with them, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to approve policy for vacation benefit eligibility at six months, and new yearly accrual rates. And, this is on the agenda separate from the other policies, because it's a change in what we're doing. In the past, new employees were not eligible for vacation until they've been here for a year. And we're asking for it at six months. And granted, they approve from day one. And so they can't get any more than what they've accrued. But we're just asking for the eligibility at the end of six months. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm sure I had that right.
So that's the, the basic change is, if I worked here for six months, I'd be eligible for like, two and a half days of vacation.
Whatever you accrued, up until then, you're eligible to use it after six months. As of right now, you have to wait till your one-year anniversary before you can use any. So, and, a couple just highlights of why we wanna do that is, we wanna be competitive with other employees to provide that one week in that first year. And it helps to, so, people coming from another job where they already have, you know, vacation built up, this is just kind of an incentive to say, hey, you know, you're accruing from the day you get hired, after your 90-day probationary period, or orientation period. You know, you are now eligible to start using that at six months, instead of that year. And then, the other change to it is that instead of, did you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. So as of right now, the policy states that from after year one, you accrue at 3.3, four hours. And then from years two, clear till year 10, you only get 10 days of vacation. So that's a huge timeframe where you only get that 10 days. So the policy change is from years two to six, you get that 10 days. And then from years seven to 15, you would get the 15 days. And I know it seems like you took one big timeframe and just swapped it to another big timeframe. But after working someplace for six years, I mean, you need to get that employee to stay and stick around. And then once they've been here for, you know, past the seven, so a longer stretch after that is more logical. Yeah, so, those are the two changes. So, to be eligible to use your accrued vacation after one year, and then to just kinda switch the timeframe of when you're eligible for the two weeks, rather than the three weeks.
And what we're trying to shift here is, is the idea of people thinking of themselves as, this is a job, to this is a career. Because most of our jobs do require special licensing and that sort of thing. And we want these people to be around for a long time.
And then, just comparing to other cities, other jobs, this is pretty standard. The way is currently is pretty unstandard.
I would say, sorry not to go into it, but you do have, on the proposed benefit, it says years two to six, and then six to 15, so that might, okay.
Okay.
Good, just making sure. But I do think it's important for us to make, we gotta be competitive. You know, if we're looking for the longevity of employees, so that we're not having a high turnover, and we can really maintain our solid crews that we already have. We wanna keep them happy.
And I agree that this is closer to what private sector, you know, what people can expect.
I wish teachers could say the same, but they can't, just so you know.
I think we're all much more productive coming off of vacation, or looking forward to a vacation.
Absolutely.
This time with family is very important, so I'm very thankful that you're looking, that we're looking to make these changes.
So would there be a motion?
I would make the motion, yeah. We make these changes as outlined here.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chipman?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Von Breckworth?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next is to approve Idaho gem grant acceptance and authorize mayor to sign. And, Mike, can you talk?
Yeah, so this is, to Sarita, she was just talking about this. This is $50,000 to help with the Parker Parkers RV project. The RV park can run the water main underneath the road from the west side traveling east. The match comes from them, the $50,000 goes straight to them, if I'm not mistaken. This is only the first one of these, I've actually participated in also. I know we've done that before, we did one with Mr. Lee across the way, and it worked out real well. So basically, the grants follow through us, but they pay the match and they are coming.
So basically, we're just the administrator?
We're just the administrator of this fund, yeah.
Right, but Idaho gem grants go for infrastructure that help you do business.
Yeah, so once Maverick pulls underneath this, help them get across the stream.
Well, I'm glad there's movement on that. I'll start in wonder.
Tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, I would motion, if there's no other questions, that we accept the Idaho gem grant and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Von Breckworth?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead and second.
Next is to approve the Highway 95 Memo of Understanding for Maintenance Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign. Mike, would you talk to us about this also?
Yes, this is a pretty standard agreement with the ICD. We had gotten out of this agreement back in, I believe, 2018, 17, this was canceled. Something to do with some conflict on the stoplight that has been now going forward. The other thing is, is this is pretty standard agreement, actually. If you go forward and look at this state of Idaho code, this is how all cities do this. The other thing is, is if like, the light goes out, they don't fix it anyway. Rubs don't get painted, they don't paint anyway. We don't have this agreement, it don't get done. That's just, puts it to where we go back to cleaning the bridge and painting the turn lanes and whatnot. Guess given questions, we're probably the best.
So that maintenance defers to us, correct?
It does.
And so then, is our road department, like, are they prepared? Do they understand what that looks like, budget-wise, with what we've already allocated for them?
Yeah, so this budget-wise, the only thing, I talked to them today, we would just have to paint it with glass beading instead of doing thermal lay at this point, because thermal lay's so expensive. And they will not help cover any of the cost on that. Basically, the only thing that they will paint is, if you took Weezer away and the highway was just there, that's what they cover. No turn lanes, no stop bars, none of that stuff. So if we want those things, we have to paint them. The other thing, like I said, I did talk to them, they'll allow us to just paint glass beading until we get to where we can re-thermal lay. And on the highway, we'll probably look at thermal laying in the next year or so, just for the fact that it lasts four or five years, and you don't have to mess with so much. It is expensive, but the cost kinda defers itself over time, if that makes sense.
And this probably isn't in your purview, but, do we do the chip seal through our town as well, or is that ICD?
They will do all of the pavement maintenance from 95 all the way through to 201 on Idaho and Maine, they do that.
Okay.
The painting and the chip sealing, we're basically just snow removal cleaning, that kinda stuff.
I would just hate for us to thermal lay, and it happened to be the year of chip seal.
We would definitely, we would definitely talk to them before that. Before we decide to do something, you know, a three to four-year maintenance, we'd definitely deal with them first to make sure they're not doing overlay or chip seal on.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And, the development south of the Weezer River Bridge has been held up because of this, not having this agreement.
Yeah, well, it's making things happen.
Yeah. So, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the Highway 95 and the new maintenance agreement, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And, next, oh, okay, hold, we passed that. Next on the agreement, or agenda, is County Road 70 realignment.
So if you guys look, I did kinda give you a rudimentary map. The only other map I have is in segments and cross-sections, I didn't think you'd want that. Treasury Valley Farms owns all that property out there. And with that being said, we've never had a real agreement for the road out there. It was just always on the road, we just maintained it. They couldn't really take it away from us, but where they own the property, as you can see, that's green up there. Up there, you can see, they're gonna move that road to the south. We have had it fully engineered with their engineers and our signing off on it to meet County Road fire specs. So we haven't built the county specs, because we don't have a dirt road spec in our, in our, in any of our engineering stuff that we have, we've never done a dirt road on purpose. So they did engineer it to meet spec, they're putting in the drainage. We may have to move some dirt around for them, but other than that, they are gonna put this road in themselves. And then they will sign an easement for ingress, public ingress, egress, and utility to be in it. So we have two 14-foot lanes with two 2-foot burrow ditches on the side for the drainage. And then they're putting in a Santa Grease trap that ties into our stormwater that's already right there. I feel like this is a good thing. And this is just kinda an update, because I don't really think, as long as they're providing us access and doing it right, we're just kinda, but, the good news is, is we will have an ingress, egress, and utility easement. And it sounds like they will need a turnover right away in the future when it's done. When they're completely finished. And they gave us the rest of the easement going east on to Layer Property, too. They'll sign all that over to us when it's all done.
Awesome.
Well, at least give us easement, which, like I said, right now we have nothing in Ryden. We have a grandfathered maintenance.
So in this realignment and the specs that they're doing, because we just, as a council, agreed to letting our rodeo, tractor rodeo, kinda move into that same part, does this affect those plans? Or is it still allow us to have the traffic control that we need?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll have basically the same, what we have now, just moved south. So the road off of Third will kinda go, kinda be off there and straight, which we may have to put in some rain guard railing there. I'm not sure yet, we went back and forth, engineers, they were like, no, yes, no. The only thing is, we wanna protect that fire hydrant there, one way or another. You have to put glass bead guard rail, you can't put anything non-movable in that way. It has to be deflection guard rail. And then, maybe there are some K rails on that south side, so they don't ride. It'll be burned up right there, I don't know, we'll have to kinda see what it looks like. Engineers said we don't need to do it, but we've been tossing the idea around to add some guard railing around there.
The onion shed, they're gonna be okay with us using, like, having our events in that area?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've talked to them, they're actually very receptive to all that. They've been great to work with, actually. Like I said, especially on this road thing, we went back and forth on the best way to do it, because it does put us behind that cell tower that's out there. It's gonna be on the south side of that cell tower, so we wanna make sure the bank was stabilized. And that's why, that was the big thing of engineering, is getting us out on that bank to make sure that bank was stable and not need sheet piling.
Okay.
Like I said, both of our engineers have said it looks good. Well, like I said, we'll have 28-foot travel lane, which is pretty much what we have now. It's kinda spread over the years, you know, it keeps getting wider and wider and wider, so. I think this is a good thing. And like I said, we'll have actual written paper with access, which is always a plus.
Mike, did you have anything to add to this?
I did.
Come forward, please, and give your address.
My name's Mike Shepard, I'm the lead operator for the water treatment plant. We are actually really excited about having this road in here. This will stop a lot of the conflict we have with their traffic, especially during harvest. And we, a lot of times, we have to work around them when we're trying to get equipment in and out. So this actually will reduce a lot of the congestion that we have right there. And it'll, it'll basically be, it'll eliminate all of their commercial traffic. And that's a huge benefit to us right there. And it kind of gets a lot of the traffic away from, uh, their traffic away from all of our infrastructure too, so.
Awesome. Who's paying for it, Matt, curiosity?
They are. They are. I said, we may have to provide them some dirt, there's, uh, we have some pit run, we may have to put in the base there on that east side, but it's stuff that we have in stock that we pulled from the river previously, so.
Okay.
Most of the expense is on them at this point, and I'd come back to you and discuss that if there was more cost.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think it's going to be a win-win situation. I, I met with Shelley, the manager, and they're, you know, they look forward to working with Weezer. They look forward to having events down at Warner's Island and, and, um, they're putting a lot of money into that facility. And I just, I think it's going to be a great deal for them and us, so.
The road through there now is a mess with potholes. Oh, yeah. They have been more than, more than great to work with. I do have to say, they've really been great people to work with.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike, for the update.
Yeah.
And next is the twenty twenty-four fireworks proposal.
I would just like to make a correction. I didn't provide this proposal, Bill Taylor got this for me. And it does say June fourth, or the event would obviously be July. Tell me. New holiday. Always leading, right?
Oh, yeah, so I'm kind of blind here. Bill had to be gone this week, he actually put this together. So what we're looking at is, we usually budget, in the budget, there's an expenditure of twelve thousand dollars, which is mostly done by donations and then we cover the rest usually. The cost this year has went up, I believe it's at fifteen percent, I was just trying to find that. So if, we can buy twelve thousand that we're budgeted for, but it, it'll get us less fireworks. So to buy the exact same order that we got, last year is now thirteen thousand eight hundred versus the twelve thousand that we usually buy. Like I said, most of this is covered by donation, I just can't guarantee it at all. And it will be, and we are budgeted to, to twelve. I think we can work around and get the other eighteen hundred if you guys wish to go down.
The reason why you're coming before us now is because we have to order it now.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So if I order the, if I order the thirteen, right, the month early, if I order the thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars worth, that is twelve thousand more than, or eighteen hundred more than we anticipated. But we do get a lot of that back in, in generous donation from the city. The city patrons donate heavily in this. We were actually over four thousand dollars carryover from the last year, so. We do have a little bit more in there, but I'm not sure as to date what's in there. I know it's on here, what says there's ten thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars, but I don't know. I don't know if I read this correctly, it was going to be in two.
So we're, we're paid ahead just from donations?
Yeah, so twenty twenty-two's donation was seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-six. And it looks like we're sitting at ten thousand three hundred and forty-eight ninety-two right now. And then we were over the four thousand from the year before. That goes in the general fund, and we're making a new way to track this too for going forward so we can have a little better. How much came in?
So our, our citizens are, are, are actually donating more than the historic cost?
And remember that the Mud Drags made a donation.
That's right.
Big donation.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
How much was that donation?
I don't remember, it's half my.
Mud Drags, Weezer was four thousand three hundred and ten.
Eight hundred times.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and full, uh, fund the full amount for the twenty-four, Fourth of July fireworks.
Yes.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Von Breckhorst?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And next item is to approve the purchase of wastewater of an F-one fifty pickup not to exceed forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. And Mike?
So this is the state spec bid, so if we piggyback here what the state bids through Mount Home Lot Rans, this is the cost of that F-one fifty is the forty thousand seven oh seven with options, brings it forty-two thousand nine thirty-two. We, we did budget for this, we budgeted fifty thousand. I hate to see it, I mean, those things went up fifty percent, they were twenty-seven thousand years ago. So I hate to say it, but that is, so the forty-two nine thirty-two is less expensive than a W T through buying it through a dealership, though. We have, look, they're, it's about the same cost, they're like forty-three if we go to a dealer and buy just a W T, which this has, uh, actually powered windows and a intel package on it, so.
Kind of truckloads for that cheap.
Uh, it's, it's actually a pretty nice extended cab pickup. They come with a lot of features anymore, it's hard to, it actually costs more to get roll-up windows than a motor with power.
So since we're doing it piggybacked off that, that contract, is that the reason we don't have to get three bids?
Yeah, we use the state contract for, uh, police cars, any kind of pickups. We go through Mount Home Lot Rans, what they do is they're all bid out in a big package. And depending on what brand you're buying, what dealership you go through, um, they'll have a different one. This, we call up there and tell them on the state spec, they build the pickup for us. The only thing is, is this may not be here till the next budget year, I just need to get it ordered now because things are picking up a little more. We should see our loader in May. Yay.
I motion that we approve the purchase of wastewater F-four, F-one fifty not to exceed forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Hoag?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Chipman? Blackwell?
Yes.
Von Breckhorst?
Yes.
And Hopkins?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Approve the contractor bid for the Indian Head Pathway Project and authorize the mayor to sign?
No, this case the Memorial Hospital.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The next item is to accept the Weezer Memorial Hospital request. And what this is, is the hospital, uh, has found that we have no drinking glasses, uh, water glasses, um, to use at banquet and that sort of thing at the end dome. And they would like to donate three hundred glasses, which is about our, our capacity. The only caveat is that they have the ability to borrow them back with their refunds.
Are they going to be branded with Weezer Memorial Foundation or City of Weezer or just a plain cup?
Just a plain glass.
That's so thoughtful of them.
I guess if they need a couple extra, since they're giving them to us in the first place, that's no big deal.
And actually, they, they have an event every year that, that we would be saying that every year in April, they could use the glasses, and it is an off-site event.
They hold a donor appreciation dinner every year. And so they will be taking them off-site for that event.
Why do we not have glasses up in the?
So we have more of the wine glass style glasses, not just the regular drinking glasses, yeah.
Who goes to the event for water?
We're also taking inventory of our silverware to make sure we have enough.
Yeah.
We haven't had to replace claveral over time before.
Well, I think this is a great deal. If you want to use it months a year and give it to us for the rest of the year.
The reason why I wanted to bring it to the council is so that we had on record the caveat that they would be able to, to use it, so that future councils would not be able to question it.
So I'll make a motion that we accept it.
Now then, we go to approve the contractor bid for Indian Head Pathway Project and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'm going to do this one?
Go.
So what you're approving is the lump sum price for the base bid of two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That leaves us to, we'd like to keep ten percent for variance. And if you approve this, we would have liked to approve it out to two hundred and fifty thousand so we can add on to this towards the end. What will happen is, is this bid will get us from Indian Head Estates with the pathway all the way down to the bottom of the hill on State Street, so right there at the end of where we, the, the storage is, the gravel.
San shed.
Yeah, sand shed, thank you, right, it was gravel shed, sand shed, thank you. Right there where that little triangle is, and we're hoping we may get to the other side of the triangle when we have the leftover money. If, uh, we approve the two hundred and twelve thousand, that leaves us the thirty-eight thousand left from the initial grant that we can use up either during construction, they may have change orders that you find soft spots or, you know, things change, right, you find stuff, that's the ten percent. But if we get towards the end, we can approve going across the street and going as far as we can this way. Those add-on bids are for different segments going south and east of there that we just didn't have the funds to do at this time. But this will get us to the bottom of the hill, which is a great start.
So have we got the two hundred and fifty budgeted?
Yes, and we, they sent us the check last year, actually. We've been sitting on the money for over a year. We could not get contractors to do it last year when it was bid, so this year, it, it bid very well, actually, we had like eight.
I'm saying, it's surprising that we can do that much.
Uh, you know, that was our hopes, is if we get to the bottom of the hill, then we can reapply for this grant. Once this one's closed out, we can go back out for it again. I mean, this one took, this was our fifth time, like, for it, and we just kept going. And it's already engineered this time, so finishing it out is already pretty simple, it's almost bid ready. So if we get the grant again, we can bid it earlier in the year. See, last time we bid it too late in the summer, and getting bids in June for.
Everybody's already committed.
And so if we go out and begin, we would work at bringing that from the bottom of the hill to downtown and also over to the old park. And, um, from the high school over to West Main, so we have a complete loop around downtown.
What happened to East Butterfield?
It's next. Don't you tell the road?
And so, just to clarify, the original amount awarded was two hundred and fifty?
Yes.
We received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that's what we're asking for, you're asking us to authorize for two hundred and fifty thousand?
I would like to authorize the mayor to make the, so we don't have to wait a month to come back and ask for change order approval to approve the mayor to sign up to the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so we're approving this contract plus?
An additional?
An additional thirty-eight thousand at the mayor's discretion.
Yes. I think that's how, is that the best way?
Is that how you say it?
Yeah, we, yeah, he would just authorize the, um, the mayor to sign the contract and then also authorize him to sign any change orders not to exceed the original amount of the grant, which was the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I don't know if I can remember that.
Just read the, just read the.
Now I have to go back. Mayor, I move to approve the contractor bid for Indian Head Pathway Project and authorize the mayor to sign any change orders not to exceed the original awarded grant amount.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Von Breckhorst?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
And Blackwell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved.
Thank you.
And next, approve TKO variance on six lots in the old Sperry subdivision.
Mayor?
Do I have a right to speak now, or do I?
Before we start, uh, Mayor, I'd like to request permission to recuse myself from this issue.
I accept. I motion that we kick Larry out for the next, I motion that we recuse Larry for the next item on our agenda.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Get out of here. And we have?
Uh, so I'm Hunter Osterman, way to the tail home, seventy-two eleven Moon Valley Road. We're asking for the variance.
Just a second.
So I don't, I don't think he can present again. Because if he presents anything that was not presented at the hearing.
Exactly.
So this is just council.
We can ask questions if we want, or not?
No, no, because he might say something, public hearing, or to planning and zoning, so.
Be keen to hold the.
So that's why you have in your. Sorry.
Thanks for joining us.
Uh, so that's why in your packet, that's why there is the, everything that went to council, I mean, went to planning and zoning, everything that went to the public hearing. So it'd be their original application, um, for the variance, and then the map, the notice of the public hearing, and then the minutes from the public hearing, also the minutes from planning and zoning, and then their recommendations in their findings and facts. And then also a staff report from Dave Lewis.
So we can talk about it amongst ourselves?
Perfect.
Check.
Thank you for keeping me under.
Well, I appreciate that they have returned with an alternative solution to what was originally presented. I, I feel, you know, even after reading the findings by planning and zoning, I, I agree. I, I think those six properties do qualify for the variance because of the layout of the land. Uh, it doesn't affect other developments and it doesn't change our land rules. I also do approve, appreciate that in the homeowners, the HOA, that they've kind of addressed some of those other concerns that I think would have been of worry and why we didn't want to make variances to begin with. But it looks like they've really been kniving and thought it through and talked it out, and so, thank you.
So the only thing that probably isn't complete at this point is where the, is getting with the canal company and figuring out exactly where the fence will be, the, on the backyards. I know to most of us or all of us, that fence is a very important part of this subdivision because we definitely don't want any children ended up in that canal. Would be a horrible loss for our community, and so, yeah, uh, it looks to me like everything's complete and unanimous decision by P and Z for us to approve, uh, your request.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I motion that we approve TKO's variance for the six lots in the old Sperry subdivision.
And I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we allow Larry to sit with us again.
Those opposed?
I could show my eyes.
We need to research that, but I think a person that has a potential conflict of interest just declares himself out and that's the end of that. Don't you, I mean, is, or have you always done it this way before?
We haven't always, we've been biased.
This is it.
You've been.
We can.
You can actually say, too bad.
We could say you're stuck, we want your opinion.
There, there was once.
Bias doesn't mean you.
There was once a time that an issue came up regarding the hospital, and so about half of us would have had to recuse ourselves.
Yeah, it's got to work.
And, um, uh, one of the, those not involved said, I think we're all right. And so, one of us, they wouldn't have had it for them.
Right, because I always thought, because I had, when I was on the, on the gas commission, I, I had a lease with the company, so that I would, every time, I would say that, uh, there's a potential for a conflict of interest, but I think that I can, you know, debate and participate. And it was up to me, it was, the burden of proof was on me whether I could be, you know, so anyway, we just need.
I'm never going to prove this still there.
Yeah, I have to initiate it.
Yeah, and he did initiate it, so I, I just didn't.
We haven't researched.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Von, happy camper.
Prove the use of city property for happy pub, camper, camper grand opening. I don't want to say that. I don't want to.
Don't, don't try.
Okay, and is there someone to speak for this?
So the, the reason this is coming to council is because they're going to have vendors on the street that are going to be selling stuff. And so anytime, like in the parks or anything like that, that there's going to be vendors actually selling stuff on the public road, we've had it, we've brought it to council. Mike's been in contact with her, I think it's pretty, I mean, she did a good job of explaining what she's going to do. Um, we did get, um, signatures from all the business owners that it would affect, and everybody was for it, um, there, there wasn't any negative, um, feedback from it. So the reason it's going to council is because of the vendors on the public street.
So they're going to block the street off? So they're gonna block the street off?
Which we've done that quite a bit in the past.
From commer, instead of, so like Kids' Day or anything like that that Patrick's done during the fiddle festival where they've gone from Maine to Idaho, this is just from commercial to Idaho. So it's this block over here instead of that block over there.
Okay. They're gonna start blocking the street at eleven-thirty and the event starts at twelve? That's a really fast set of time for vendors. A really fast set of time.
You guys, you guys can approve that it, it's from the beginning of their event for setup and then cleanup as well. You don't have to approve just the set hours.
Just, just having bid someone, it's like, that's, that's very stressful turnaround right there.
So Carl, did you see, see any issues with closing of this street for this event?
And is it, so they're, at Camper, it's a traveling groomer and so that's why they're...
They have an office right there.
So where the flower basket used to be, within that building, there's a, a section of the building that's with, and I'm not sure if it has its own entrance, but it's within that, yeah, it's within that storefronts right there is their office. There is going to be mobile, so, yeah, come to the house.
Okay, remind me, in this, is it gonna be like all afternoon type of thing?
Like four thirty.
Eleven-thirty to four is what they're asking.
And I've discussed it with street crew. I mean, we went through, I've talked to everybody on it. It's, nobody has any issues with it. It's just that when they sell, if they weren't selling stuff, we would just do it as a regular event, but where they're selling stuff, it goes to council.
Oh, okay.
And the people selling stuff are not, they don't already have businesses that are in that block. So they'll be like, like a food truck or a, another vendor that doesn't already have storefront.
Okay, so and the neighbors were all, all informed of exactly what, what was going on? Well, as far as I'm concerned, if the neighbors don't care, the people that is, you know, possibly...
Good business for everyone.
In fact, it doesn't seem like that big a deal to me.
Mr. Mayor, you're in for motion. I would move that we approve the use of city property for the Happy Pub, Pamper, Camper, old grand opening.
Second.
Pretty excited I got that out.
Been moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion pass. Next item is to approve policies for visitors to offices and work sites, rest, break and mealtime, paid holiday benefit, sick leave benefit, bereavement benefit and library reporting structure. So this is a lot to digest. So if you have any questions? I think most of it's pretty straightforward.
Although I was the library person for two years, I, I'm, I'll be the first to admit that I'm not sure what its policies were. And that's the only one that would raise questions for me. The rest of them look good, but I just want to make sure that have the library, the librarian and their, their board been able to review and make sure that they are okay with this policy.
Yes, so...
Knowing that you guys have to work together.
Yes, so this policy was written by HR and it was then given to me. I fully didn't understand how it all worked, so I did my research as well. I sent this to Timber. Timber is the one who actually made corrections, made, I mean, she went through it, changed a lot, clarified a lot. So this is how she...
From our librarian?
Yep.
That's what I wanted to hear. Perfect.
Councilmember Chipman did bring up that in your policies, it says, it says if there is an issue, it should be reported to the library director or a member of the library board of trustees of, and it did say of the board?
Of the city.
Of the city. So we need to say...
And so it needs to go.
Oh, back to the library.
Yeah.
And we did change just a couple of things where it says board of trustees of the library board. And it's, it's just the board of trustees of the library.
Right.
So that was just a, you know...
So we, we did make those corrections and we, for the final copies, we will have those corrections made.
That fit within the Department of Redundancy Department, right? Okay, any other questions or comments?
I think they're, it's a little good to me. I mean, days off, we want to make sure that we celebrate, offer that time for families. It makes us more competitive within the market. These are all good things for our employees.
And what you just said about being on the library board and not really knowing what the policies were, that's why we're going through and...
Yeah, exactly.
And codifying all of this, there were, there were a lot of things that were...
I mean, I know what the library's policies are, but not necessarily the city's version and how those merge, so that's great. This is good to know.
But there were a lot of, there have been a lot of things in our HR that were not documented.
Yeah.
And so we're just going through and making sure we do that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, unless there's further discussion, I move that we approve the policies, including visitors to offices and work sites, rest, break room and mealtime, paid holiday benefit, sick leave benefit, bereavement benefit and library reporting structure.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And now, most of...
Sorry.
Most important item on the agenda.
I second.
All in favor?